All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Please write for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we please have roll call?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner is absent. Councilmember McCafferty.
Present.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Grunio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
And our town attorney Andrew McGuire is present remotely.
Okay, both of them. All right, call the public. Call the public is an opportunity. Oh, this is yours, isn't it?
We probably should do number two even though there's not anything there. We can read that one.
Okay, I'll go ahead.
Thanks.
Is to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for call the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and discussion at a later date, or responding to criticism. What did I do wrong?
That's nothing. Can we just address that number two? We did not have any items under number two.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
This meeting is starting off really good, isn't it? Okay, now can we go to public comments? You want me to read it again?
No.
Yeah, I don't want to either. Do we have anybody put in?
I do have one, Cheryl Main. We're calling it the public.
There she is. Come on up. That's okay.
If I get here late, I'll just have to come next month. Thank you very much for being council members. It's a volunteer position, and I know what time and energy you put into that as a volunteer myself some years ago. And I just want to make kind of a blanket statement of appreciation and approval and support for Chief Winn and his decision to spend budgeted money I heard about in a community meeting yesterday for a resource officer. And it's much needed and I think very much appreciated. He shared some information about the relationship that he's building with the students of the Chino Valley Unified School District. And I fully appreciate that and support it. I think it's gonna make all the difference in the world. And marked my calendar for the dodgeball tournament that's gonna happen in May. There were a couple other officers that were also at the meeting. And so Jeff Peasy, if I'm saying it right, Peasy is the resource officer. And he and John Shoal, the superintendent of the district, have put together a good relationship. And I think it's much beneficial for our community. Just that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, have a good meeting. I'm on to another appointment.
Okay, you wanna go?
I will interject real quick that mark calendars for the dodgeball game because it is awesome. The eighth graders win.
Mayor Miller and town council, my name is Rick Nichols. I'm the safety officer for the Chino Valley Flyers. Previously, it's Chino Valley Model Aviators. I wanted to give you just a quick update on how what our club status is doing so you know we're busy out there. We currently have one hundred and forty-seven members. Most of them are from out of town. So we bring in a lot of people. We have a fund that we keep for improving our airport out there. And it's a ten-year plan to resurface our runway every ten years with a cost of about fifty thousand dollars. And we just did that two years ago. We have plans to just reseal it every three years. Currently, we're working on a project and we've had pulled permits through the town. We're gonna put an extension on our cabana that's out there and more concrete to make room for more airplanes. We're really in good shape. We really appreciate the lease that we get from the town. And we try to take very good care of that property. If there's any questions.
I believe that's on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
It's on the agenda?
No, no, it's.
It's on the agenda.
It's okay.
Are we good?
No, sir. No, no questions. I don't think so.
Okay. Yes, sir.
You guys are doing a great job out there. I've been following it and have some equipment for, I've been here eleven, twelve years and it's nice.
Right, well, thank you very much. We do contribute to the Food Bank as our charity. And we have an annual big show that we put on. We even have real airplanes fly in, ultralights. And that's all I have. There is an item on the consent agenda concerning this today and we hope that goes well. Thank you very much, council and mayor.
Anybody else would like to address the council? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Current events and summaries and reports. This is, this item is for information only. The mayor and any council member or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events. If listed below, there may also be a presentation on information requested by the mayor and council and questions may be answered. No action will be taken. So it's the mayor and council regarding current events. This town has recently learned of the passing of former council member Joel Baker. Mr. Baker served on the town council from March twenty-third ninety-nine through June fourteenth of two thousand and eleven. Mr. Baker served as vice mayor from June twelfth, two thousand and three, through June fourteenth, two thousand and eleven. Please join me in a moment of silence for his remembrance. Okay, thank you very much. Anything over here?
Yes, I'd like to appreciate we have youth over at the community center. There were some problems with the lights. The Cub Scouts meet there. And they've, the maintenance and stuff have got on to it and we appreciate that. It's a work in progress and it's good to get that fixed.
Thank you. Nothing here. How about down here?
Nope.
Amy?
Nope.
All right.
Mrs.?
Nothing? Wow. We're gonna be done soon.
Soccer season's over.
Okay, where are we at? I'm confused.
Would you like me to read for you?
Consent agenda, huh?
Would you like me to read for you?
Yeah, would you mind?
I don't mind at all.
All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the general, from the consent agenda, excuse me, and be considered and discussed separately. Anybody on this side like to remove anything?
Nope.
Anything over here?
No.
All right. Miss Amy.
Are you entertaining a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I will make a motion. We approve consent agenda items five A, B, C, D, and E as written.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Action items. The council may vote to recess the public meeting and go, I'm sorry, and hold an executive session on any item on this agenda pursuant to ARS thirty-eight four thirty-one point oh three eight three for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public and no action may be taken in executive sessions. Item six A, consideration and possible action to accept accepting funds from the Department of Housing for the town of Chino Valley's four-year rotational community development block grant, CDBG, funding and authorize the mayor to sign said application upon completion by NACOG and town staff. Hi, it is you.
It is me.
Says right there, Terry. That's you.
That is me. Good evening, Mayor Miller, Vice Mayor Perkins, and council. Tonight, we're just going to briefly take you through the process. I got to this point. We have an action item, both for a public hearing and then for you to vote on a program to move forward. So first, there's a lot of acronyms in here. As you talked about, the community development block grant is administered federally by HUD, the U.S. Department of Urban Development. On the state level, those funds then pass through and the program is administered by the Arizona Department of Housing. We work directly with NACOG who assists applicants and administers the program so that we can successfully apply and receive those funds. Based on a poverty and population formula, the Arizona Department of Housing determines how much funds will be allocated to each community. We're on a rotating cycle and we're eligible to apply for those funds once every four years. Based on that formula, you'll see this year we're up for three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, six hundred and eighty-six dollars. You can see the money that we received in the past for projects. The timeline, last month, we were required to have a first public hearing, open to the public, to bring forth any projects that anybody in the community might want to have the council consider. We had that meeting and we had no public in attendance. All of the projects that were advanced for consideration at that point were brought forth by staff. As you can see, in, okay, by staff tonight, then you will have a second public hearing to, for a public comment on which project to select and then you will vote on that. Once you have selected a project, staff will put that application together, work with NACOG to meet all the, make sure we're meeting all the requirements. And then in March and April, we'll bring it back where we'll ask you to pass a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign that application. Once we get the application documents together, it goes through their process. We, usually about October, it'll come back for, to be ready to sign the contract documents and then we, construction can begin in the winter. To be eligible, this is to try and address poverty and blight in the community. So there are some eligibility requirements when selecting a project that are important to consider. At least fifty-one percent of the persons who benefit from the project must be low to moderate income or the project must aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight or the project must serve an urgent health need. Previous Chino Valley projects funded by the CGB, CDBG funds include, and you can see some of the most recent ones going backwards from the bottom up. Interestingly, we want to note that the senior center back in nineteen eighty-five was built by CDBG funds. You'll see a lot of infrastructure projects on here more recently. Some of those, as we talk about the potential project list, you'll see there were some infrastructure projects on here, some private purchases. A lot of these ones, we consulted with NACOG and were not eligible based on some of those requirements we talked about earlier. And also, we know that we have CARES Act and ARPA funding that will do infrastructure. And that was important in the final decision of which project we want to advance for your consideration to apply for those funds. And that project is the Senior Center renovation and improvement project. So on that note, I'm going to ask Cindy Thomas, Community Services Manager, to talk to you a little bit about the services they provide in the state of the building.
Thanks, Terry. Good evening, mayor and council. Quickly, I'd like to share just a couple of statistics from the National Aging on Council regarding aging in Arizona. The one thing we all have in common, no matter what our sex, what our religion, or what our political, political views are, is that we are all aging. By the year twenty twenty-five, you can't stop it, I'm sorry. By the year twenty twenty-five, thirty percent of Arizona's population will be over the age of sixty. That's up from sixteen point nine percent in twenty twenty, I'm sorry, in twenty-ten. The eighty-five-plus population is the fastest-growing age group in the state and will increase a hundred and forty-one percent by the year twenty twenty-five. Currently, more than twenty-five percent of Yavapai County's population is over sixty. One of the key parts of our mission statement is to provide meals on wheels and congregate meals for the Chino Valley community. In fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we served just over eleven thousand congregate meals and almost sixteen thousand meals on wheels. You'll remember, we were a little shut down during part of that time, so our congregate numbers were a little low. We're projected to serve almost sixteen thousand meals in both categories this fiscal year. Our senior center kitchen, as Terry stated, was built in nineteen eighty-five. There has never been an update. And as you can see by one of the pictures, I'm gonna get there. We're gonna get there. I think so. Maybe not. Okay, maybe we don't have it. In one of the pictures that we recently found, the same cabinets and countertops are in there. That's in the original picture from nineteen eighty-five. We are using the same ovens and the same dishwashing machine as we were in nineteen eighty-five. And just a side note, both of those machines were donated to us used by another center. A kitchen renovation would greatly improve the efficiency of the senior center operations and improve the health and well-being of our senior population. I want to thank you for taking the time to consider this project. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions over here? How about you?
Great job. I know the veterans group meets there twice a month and awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. So with the project estimate, so the project itself includes everything. It includes, let me make sure I get this right, architectural and design services, an environmental assessment, grant administration, capital item purchases, project management, management and construction, and contingency. That total budget is estimated at this point to be, for a full renovation, including the parking lot, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. The CDBG grant is three hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-six. A hundred and fifty thousand had been programmed into the five-year capital plan to do some renovations at the senior center where this program could allow us to do a full renovation. Additionally, there is a grant, a Mary Campbell grant, for twenty-five thousand and that would take us to more than enough funds to do a complete renovation of this project. The other point about this is that's nice if the town, when we come back later for the budget process, should you decide to approve that allocation and using the Mary Campbell grant, we could start with the design and some of the environmental assessments, get those things in place, get a final budget so when the allocation is available at the end of the year, we could be ready to go right to construction.
Good. Good.
And that is it. Any questions?
Okay, any questions over there? Any more?
Sounds great. The facility gets a lot of use.
Yeah, I think it's well deserved. How about this side? You guys got anything?
Just one. The one fifty is already allocated in reserves for the CIP funding?
It is in the five-year plan, but it will be, it's programmed in the five-year plan. It will be part of the next year's budget that you will then approve for final allocation.
Okay.
And the other thing to note too is that senior centers, senior programs for seniors automatically qualify. So because of that, we don't have to do income surveys and all those other things that you might normally need to do to make sure a project qualifies. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to open up a public hearing for this. Is this a motion? Can't remember. Just open it. All right, is there any comments from the public on this?
I do have one speaker card from Beth Alsop and Randy Stuflick, who are Chino Valley residents. Okay, so different item then. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay.
We don't, we don't want to miss that one.
All right, there's, so anybody else with comments on this? Okay, hearing done. We're gonna close the comments and I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion. We approve the senior center renovation improvement project as the town selected project for the twenty twenty-two CDBG funding.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item six B, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two nine one zero for the rezoning of approximately four point five-five acres of real property from the AR five agricultural residential, five acre minimum, to SR one, single-family residential, one acre minimum. This property is located approximately seven hundred feet east of the intersection of Road one north and Road one west with an address of eight three six West Road one north, Arizona parcel number three oh six two three zero two eight. Will?
All right, good. Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, and members of the council. Will Denji, senior planner with the town of Chino. Before you, is a rezon request for, is a request for rezon in order to buy the A piece of property here in town. The applicant, Mr. Roskoff, is in attendance if you have any questions for him this evening. As described by our mayor, this four point five-five acre subject property is located at eight three six West Road one north and is currently used as a single-family residence. To the east of the property, you have the Chino Grove subdivision, and to the west, you have the Vista Bonita subdivision. The majority of properties in this area are zoned SR one along with several AR five parcels that are under the minimum required, five acres. The applicant's request of SR one conforms with the surrounding area. It also conforms with the general planned land use designation for this area of two acres or less. This item went before the Planning and Zoning Commission on December seventh and received a unanimous approval. So the Planning and Zoning Commission is forwarding to council a recommendation of approval to approve this rezoning with the stipulations outlined in attachment A. With that, I'll open it up to questions or discussion from the council.
All right, any questions over here, fellas?
Nope.
I'm looking for the attachment. Oh, I got it.
I don't have it either. It's here somewhere. You guys got questions over here? No. We're looking for the attachment.
I got it right here. Per the town's unified development ordinance, section five point three point two, table five dash one, the minimum required right-of-way dedications are as follows. Forty feet north of the section line on West Road one north.
All right.
Well, there it is. I didn't even have to look for it.
I had to make you look for it first.
You were gonna make her work for it, right? All right, no questions, no discussion.
Mr. Mayor, this, I believe, is the item. If you would like to open it up for public comment.
Sure, we'll take your comment. Come on up. Just, you gotta get up there so they can hear you at home.
Oh, well, I'm not gonna be able to hear that. Good evening. So we were unable to attend the planning and zoning due to COVID.
One more thing. Please state your name.
I'm sorry. My name is Beth Alsop.
Thank you.
Randy Stuflick.
Okay. We were unable to attend the planning and zoning for this because of COVID. But we did tell Mr. Denji our concerns and he did share them, but we're not quite sure if anything got answered. So we just wanted to kind of do our concern again. So there has been some poor planning by planning and zoning or public works, whatever it's called in Chino Valley, where we are located at in Messenger Drive and Road one north, directly south of this plan. We are getting flooded out by water coming down. And the water has no place to go except for into our land and other properties along Messenger. Okay, so we just wanted to know, since this is to the north of us, where is this, is this water gonna continue on for the natural flow? That's kind of where we're at in this.
To help this out a little bit, to help this out a little bit, we just moved there four years ago. When our U-Haul was still in the driveway, we got pounded with over two and a half inches of rain. Well, after that was done, the sun come out, the kids were out there playing with the pants pulled up a little bit. Well, four years have gone by and the hard packing behind us to the south has gone quite a bit. Big houses, great big garages and RV parking covered, everything. Well, we got an inch and a half just last year. And it more than doubled the water flow. We got flooded out. Our wood, our, all of our beams and posts and stuff got pulled up out of the ground. My septic tank got flooded. This is just in four years and there's still more hard packing going on. All right? I had Frank and Steve both come down. I showed them the pictures of the flooding. It's very severe. And it must have been a mistake too in wording because Frank was, if you find that. Frank and Steve came down and the trespassing of water is so great that it comes all the way back into the whole property, lifting posts up and everything.
So when we go back to this planning and zoning one, Frank states that.
Well, this is where I get confused. This must be a problem when they transcribed it down on paper because Frank and Steve were both out there. There's no way the water is gonna come back to the south. It's all going to the north. But Frank Mulberry, Mr. Denji asked a question about the road and stuff like that. And Frank stated, this word must be a mistake, stated that the water flow from the south to the north and that the email is from residents to the south, us, there would not be any water flowing south. Why he would even say that when he knows exactly what's going on, that must be a part of translation, this when it got copied over. Or he's just playing trying to kick it out of the ballpark, which they have been doing for quite some time on the Messenger Lane people.
So I see our time's just about up. We have no concerns with Mr. Roskoff and his development. We think that's very appropriate for the area we're in. Our concerns are that there's no water being allowed to flow from Messenger and Road one to that property.
To the north.
And hard packing has already gone past the limit of an eighteen-inch culvert going under North one. An eighteen-inch carval to carry all of that? That's obscene.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That, that's a totally different subject than this, but we will, can you check into that?
Sorry, yeah, mayor and council will look into it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I appreciate that because we have gotten no response over the first three months and the last. Like totally being ignored and that's not right to the citizens of Chino Valley.
Right, right. We'll get, we'll get to hold of you and they'll get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I forgot where I was. Oh, yeah, we's at the motion portion unless anybody else had comments up here.
No.
On this side? All right, let's go with the motion.
I suppose. Um, I suppose. I make a motion to approve ordinance two zero two two dash nine one zero for the rezoning of approximately four point five-five acres of real property from AR five agricultural residential, five acre minimum, to SR one, single-family residential, one acre minimum, as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And since you're sitting in Mr. Turner's spot, why don't you adjourn us?
I know, um, mayor.
No, no.
Mr. Mayor, can we do six seat, please?
Did I?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm pushing things. Excuse me. I apologize. We're not gonna adjourn yet. Item C, consideration and possible action to approve a conditional use permit for a temporary model home complex. This property is located in the northwest-east corner of intersection of East Perkinsville Road and Road one northeast, APN three oh six eighteen zero zero nine H. Will, it is you.
Good evening, once again, mayor and vice mayor and members of the council. So this item was written and prepared by our new planner, Bethan Hang. This is her first opportunity to present to you tonight. She has been with the town, I think you're going on five, six months now. And so I will go ahead and turn it over to Bethan.
All right, thank you. You're welcome.
All righty, well, thank you, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. Bethan, planner with the town, tonight, the item before you is for a conditional use permit. I'm a little short here, for a temporary model home complex in Perkinsville forty-four. So here is the location map of the subject property. The forty-four acres is located at the northeast intersection of where North Road one east and East Perkinsville Road intersect. To the south of the property is Chino Valley Aquatic Center and to the east of the property is Bonnie Plant Farms. Oh, and I apologize, I forgot to mention that the applicant is here in attendance tonight. So the proposed project for the location of the model home sales office, it will be located in phase one of the Perkinsville forty-four project on Lot seventy-five, seventy-six, and seventy-seven. So the office will be located in the garage portion of Lot seventy-six and later reverted to its original intent of a model home. And Lot seventy-seven will be a parking lot, which will also be reverted to its original intent. So here are some examples of what those model home complexes will look like. And this case was brought forward to Planning and Zoning Commission on January fourth and the commission unanimously voted for a forward of a recommendation of approval. So the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission is an approval for town council to approve the conditional use permit to allow for a temporary model home complex with the stipulation. to allow for a temporary model home complex with the stipulations outlined in attachment A.
Do you have attachment A?
I do. Thank you. At this time, I'll open the floor to any questions.
Is, is the A, is that the bold?
So.
No, it's the whole thing.
So it is the whole thing, including the slide. Um, and this, there were some changes in the last minute before it went, before Planning and Zoning Commission. And the change that occurred happened in stipulation number two, which is the bold and underlined. And number one, actually.
Alright.
Can you go to the next slide, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Alright.
Ashley thought we were just gonna blow by her and she wouldn't have to do anything back there. Look of concern on her face.
How about over here, fellas? Any questions?
Not a thing.
Annie? How about you guys?
No.
You do.
Go on.
So these, so these homes will be model homes, three model homes built?
Two.
Two. Two model homes built. No storage containers allowed around?
No, sir.
They'll be completely built for customers to walk into?
Yes, to see what the model homes will look like.
And the roads gotta be paved to the model homes.
Not paved. If you go back to the one paved, that's free.
Yes, that is correct.
You're good?
Yes, good.
Motion?
Alright. I make a motion. We approve a conditional use permit, C dash two one dash zero two, for a temporary model home complex as presented, subject to the staff report, information provided during this hearing, and the conditions in attachment A.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, can you adjourn? Make a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, we're out of here.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you. I apologize for butchering everyone.
Mr. Roskoff.